All right, it's five o'clock. It's five o'clock now, so I'll call the regular meeting of Kedeta County Public Hospital District Number One Board Commissioners to order. It's September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Please turn off your phones. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. The only thing I'll note on the agenda is we have Amy Clark said filling in for Dee Dee today and Stephanie Walker filling in for Stacy Liam. Other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Bob, second from John. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of last board meeting, the approval of checks, the foundational report, and the finance committee minutes for August twentieth. Anything that anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, sir.
A motion from Erica.
Second.
Second from Terry. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Okay, it's time for public comments and announcements. If you have a public comment, please start by stating your name and where you're from, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes. And keep in mind that the board does not respond to comments during the public meeting, but we do always endeavor to address your concerns and reply to you after the meeting. Are there any public comments or announcements right now? Okay. No public comment announcements. Thank you. We'll start with the presentation of the Safe Catch Awards. Now, as I say all the time, this is, I think, one of the most enjoyable things we do at QI Council because we get to see all the great work that our employees on the ground are doing. I'll start by reminding everybody what Safe Catch is. Safe Catch involves at least one of the following. Catch prevented an event from reaching a patient or staff member. The catch prevented pain, delays in care, unnecessary costs, or workflow inefficiencies. The situation was high. It had potential for greater patient harms such as communication errors, surgical site infections, or falls. And the catch led to frontline or just-in-time improvement. So I'll start with the non-clinical award that goes to Alicia Walsh. Alicia's not here today. Alicia's an RN in general in vascular surgery, and the reason for the nomination was identifying a procedure that a procedure had not been scheduled correctly. So here's what happened. Alicia was prepping for scope procedure day prior calls and noticed one of the patients was to have had a double scope but was only scheduled for a single. As a result, Alicia identifying this miss, she was able to update the patient's procedure with the SOP team so the patient could have both procedures as planned. Had this miss not been identified ahead of time, the SOP crew wouldn't have known to set up for the second scope and would have had to scramble, or the patient might not have gotten the procedure done at all, and she would have had to return at a later day. Additionally, this may have saved the patient from potential insurance denial in the event the second scope required a prior authorization. Alicia was nominated by Monique McCready in general vascular surgery. So Alicia's not here tonight, but congratulations to Alicia. We do have our second Safe Catch winner here, Seth McDonald. He's a PC with home health in the hospice. And he was nominated by Chad Barup, an RN with home health in the hospice. And the reason for nomination was recognizing a change in patient's condition. So Seth McDonald was able to quickly recognize that his patient was different than in previous visits. He was confused and having pain behind his left eye. Seth quickly reached out to a colleague and confirmed that the patient needed to go to the emergency room as the patient did not think this was serious. Seth was able to convey to the patient the seriousness of his condition and get him and his family to agree they needed help. Seth called nine-one-one and the patient was transported to KVH. Seth then called the ED and gave a detailed report of patient's history to the receiving nurse. The patient was found to have a stroke, and Seth's quick actions got him to treatment in an expedited fashion. Please help me in joining us there and congratulating Seth McDonald. Thank you for coming, and we really appreciate the work you do.
I appreciate being here at hospital. I truly say that.
As you guys know, he'll be recognized with having a charm for his ID and a gift card. So thank you again.
One thing, I mean, Ron doesn't know is our department has Safe Catches all the time. I've just been lucky. This is my second nomination. I've been lucky enough to be nominated. You know, our department does it very regularly.
But we appreciate getting all those nominations and reading about all the good work you guys are doing and.
I need to remember to nominate people.
Yeah. Thanks again, Seth.
So you're gonna do a photograph. We will continue on with presentations. We've got Rehab Services, Marcus Jaffe, Chris Jensen. Welcome.
For those who don't know me, my name is Marcus Jaffe. I'm a physical therapist. I've been with KVH for quite a while. I was a volunteer in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, got hired as a rehab aide, went to PT school, came back in two thousand and fifteen to be a PT, and I took over as director in two thousand and eighteen, and ever since then, I've been able to lead one of the best PT crews in the state.
And my name's Chris Jensen. I'm our regional manager for the state of Washington. I'm housed in Aberdeen. I function as the Director of Rehab for Grace Harbor Community Hospital out there, and I work on operational oversight for KVH, working with Marcus here. I did school in Colorado. I'm a PT by trade. I'm from Northern California. I've been out in Grace Harbor now for six years and enjoying Washington.
So every staff meeting that I have, and we have a staff meeting today, I start off, the very first thing that I do is I go over our press gaining scores and our press gaining comments. Because at the end of the day, in my opinion, the patient experience and how they feel they were treated and how they feel they were heard is about nine, ten of what we do, right? If they feel like they receive good treatment, then we're doing our job. And so I like to just read a few of these off to you, and these are, I would say, this is pretty characteristic of a lot that we get. So we have therapists give their best, offices top-notch. We had someone specifically shout out to Jennifer for pediatric care and saying that she would be requesting us in the future for further needs. Overall, positive outlook on KVH system as a whole. One hundred percent will be back. I really love this one. I love acting this out for my staff as I read them out. Amazingly kind and patient part of the desk place. Best traveling physical therapist. Brittany was amazing and so helpful. And KVH Birthing Center is awesome, but so are we. So grateful. So I think I just love this. I also, you know, I know that our general score for the hospital, seventy-five, for it about eighty-two point three, and we fluctuate up and down. I mean, there's some some months that were really high, a couple of months here and there that that were in the seventies, but overall, we're maintaining a pretty good opinion through our press gaining reports. So I think that's a great way to start, how people, how our patients feel about this.
Okay, a few metrics for the department. Our cancellation, no show rate for two thousand and twenty-four is sitting at about seventeen percent. We look for that to be closer to fifteen. Industry standard for therapy is generally around eighteen, so we are below that, but we are reaching for fifteen. In terms of our accessibility in the department, our evaluations are completed on average of twenty-one days. And that's a measurement of time from when we receive the referral to when the patient is seen. Our patients do receive immediate follow-up treatment once they are evaluated, so there's not a delay in actual treatment. Our scheduled fill rate, the amount of appointments that we have available to us throughout the week is set at about ninety percent right now. That does fluctuate, but pretty consistently, about ninety percent. Our referrals are contacted within thirty-six hours of receiving the referral in the office that's done by the front office staff that Marcus works with. Oh, Marcus, you were gonna touch on.
Yeah, and you know, as far as accessibility, we do average twenty-one days. And so that, I mean, obviously, you guys know that that means that there's some people who come in a little later, some people who come in sooner. Just as an aside on the accessibility, what are we doing if people need to be seen quicker? Because there are patients, there are patient populations that need to be seen the same week. So we're working closely with those physicians who are most likely to provide those to create the processes so we can be proactive and not reactive in the situations they've shown up. I've the orthopedic is just the example I have, because I met with Dr. Longo's office at an all-physician call with with the PA Derek, who'd come in and working on making a program so when someone goes to their pre-elective surgery, they can make their appointment there instead of having the surgery and then calling us, right? Because that sort of process is something that that makes it easier and gets them in sooner, right? So that the people who need to be seen quickly can be seen, and we're working, and we'll talk a little bit later about this, but we are doing that. I'm going on a journey through basically all the main clinics in KVH and trying to develop that and identify those patients who do need to be seen quicker so we can get them in. But the orthopedics is sort of the lowest hanging fruit there. So, yep.
Very good. And then units per visit sitting about two-point-three, and then the next slide, I'm gonna touch on that in a little bit more depth.
Quick question. So twenty-one days on average, but the triage based on the procedure that they've received on how fast they need to be seen. So someone could could be seeing like within a couple of days after they've had a procedure.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to oversell, because I don't want to, I mean, that could happen. And we when people come in with certain diagnoses, like if, and we were talking in our strategy meeting earlier, there are certain situations where someone might come in because they had, they already have had their orthopedic surgery on the west side of the mountains, and we didn't get the referrals. Now they're showing up the day of, saying, I need PT. That's the sort of uh-oh situation where we make, we get them in pretty quickly. I would say on average, people are let me back a little bit, but we try to avoid that situation by creating the processes, right? Because if someone shows up, our goal is to have a full schedule, right? So if someone shows up the day of for a, something like that, then then we make other accommodations to make that work. But yes, on the triage, orthopedics always get priority. Fresh neurological diagnoses get priority. Where someone who may have had nonspecific mechanical back pain might be three, four weeks out.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Is there industry average? Like, what's the norm?
Yeah, two to three weeks. We're shooting for the two weeks. Yeah. That's our goal, is to get that twenty-one down to fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And obviously, like you said, you're triaging, and so there are certainly subset of patients that are much quicker than that. And some of the data gets skewed upward a bit because the rescheduled patient that goes out because they didn't show up and then they reschedule, it skews it out further. So we just, we're probably gonna dive into the data a bit more and see, take those out, see what we're at with those patients that aren't rescheduling or no showing their evaluation.
I'd also just like to point out that unlike a freestanding outpatient therapy clinic, Rehab Visions cares for our inpatients and swing patients as well, and it's critical for them to get in and get evaluations done and assessments done so that we can discharge patients. So they're a critical part of that care team and are very reliably available to our inpatient folks. So that's some work that they've done with Jeff and his team in recent years. So it's a little more complicated than just a throughput outpatient type setting.
About six days a week, right? Financials, twenty-four today. These are KVH numbers. These represent the department as a whole, all three disciplines, inpatient and outpatient. Revenue, three-point-one. Had the budgeted three-point-five. Expenses are down one-point-two-three million, expenses under about a hundred thousand, which we like to see. And our operating income is representative in the margins there. We're about a percent lower than the KVH budgeted operating margin, which we are hopeful to meet at the end of the year. Be back up to the sixty-three percent. And these numbers are all built upon volumes, which is what's coming up next. So these are our units that we bill for inpatient and outpatient. This is by year, it's a little bit confusing, but by quarter. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and the bars are current year, twenty-four. And really, these ups and downs that you see in our units are representative of our FTE status in the department, particularly in the outpatient department. Some of these dips in last year. We see a dip here in quarter three. We had a couple of staff members decide that they want to start their own business, so we had a decrease in our units there. We have hired some staff that Marcus will talk about soon, just in between these two quarters, so we're looking for quarter four to be up. Quarter two, we had our we had an interesting some injuries, a number of people about, but overall, twenty-four is getting back to where we want it to be. Quick comment on the operating market, that's pretty, the thing we don't allocate to bureaucracy with is contractual adjustments, so it's total charges, total expenses. We don't actually collect total charges. It's like about fifty percent, so.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have an operating engine, no two million there.
No.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm assuming at least half of this, fifty percent of that is not there.
Yeah, it does look great, though.
And expenses, it's employees are included in that I mean, that.
Yeah, contracted services, yeah.
Yeah.
Included in that, yeah.
So how many FTEs did you have in quarter one, and how many did you have in quarter two? I mean, if you know, how many do you have now?
Yeah, so twenty-one, we were sitting at about nine-point-three for the department. Twenty-two, we were down about seven and a half. Twenty-three, we were at eight-point-seven. I believe right now we're sitting at about eight-point-seven, you know, again. Excuse me, with our new hires, we were down at, I think, seven-point-seven until we hired those three new staff. Yeah, and that's by year. I know that's not broken up by quarter for you, but I can tell you that quarter three here last year is when we lost three of our staff to that new business they opened.
The three staff you hired are not full-time, I take it?
They are. They are full-time, yeah. Yeah, they won't be, you know, they were hired over the summer at the end of quarter two, so the work we can send stuff out, too, as we look at those next quarters coming up. Visits represent similar to units. Now, part of the department, the volume of the department is built up primarily of PT. And so we wanted to showcase some of the things that we're doing in the PT well throughout, but how PT is driving some of our access. We didn't lose any PTs. If you look at our visits, had a a decrease in our visits before last year from those OT and speech therapists that we lost. We didn't lose PT. And Marcus and his team have been working really hard to increase the evidence. And we've seen that in twenty-three as we have increased our access even into here. We had that lull with somebody injured, family emergencies, and a few things here, but if we extrapolate it, we would have been up here. They've been here with our new hires. We're expecting that to go. And do you want to talk about that now, the thirty minutes, or?
Yeah, so I think I did mention this last year when we were in here about adjusting the the schedule to allow for more visits. So we used to run on the PT side and the physical therapy side. We used to run forty-five-minute evals, forty-five-minute visits. So everything was forty-five minutes across the board. We ended up making evaluations one hour and then follow-ups, half hour with the option of doing an hour for a complex patient or someone who needs more care. So it's still the option for people to receive more if they need it. What that does is it doesn't increase the overall units, because time is time, but it does increase the amount of visits that we have on the physical therapy side, which allowed for more access, which we do see going up here. So you see that we have total more in two thousand and twenty-three as we increased the total amount of visits that we had available. So we did increase that access with the FT that we had available to us.
And this is representative of the number of new patients evaluations that were pulled from, not just total visits. So new patients that we got in the door, as Marcus was saying, last year, we really put a push on that. See a pretty big jump from last year, and we're trending for the same this year. So yes, there's only so many hours in the day, but his team is doing a great job of getting more people in the community in to be seen.
So staffing, so in two thousand and twenty-four, we hired a new PT, a new OT, a new SLP, and they are full-time hires. Our new physical therapy hire is a sports-certified specialist with experience going through a residency and then helping teach a sports residency. So that's something that we actually haven't had that type of specialty at our clinic before. So that is very good. Hired a new OT over the summer, and the same with a speech-language pathologist. And our speech-language pathologist is currently being mentored by the KVH speech-language pathologist. So we appreciate that assistance. And the other thing it does is it creates a great bond between those two therapists. So when there's issues on upper county or lower county, and they need to talk it out, that relationship already exists, which I really like. And I can't really overstate how big of a deal that is. I know you guys know how hard it is to hire folks, and over the summer, we got three of them, which I'm really proud of. Currently, this is, all of these stats include these folks. So we have six physical therapists at varying levels of FTE, so ranging from one to point one, two PTAs, three PRNPTs who primarily help during the weekends, and two full-time travelers to help fill in the gaps until our recruiting yields some fruit. That new OT, as well as Dakota, Dakota's the one that does the hand therapy, speech-language pathologist, and we are looking to hire two more PTs. And honestly, we would hire more, but right now, those are the businesses we have open currently. As far as recruiting, we're continuing to have an active presence in local and Washington State job fairs and colleges. So every time one of these new PT schools or old PT schools, but the one in PNWU just had job fair going to U-Dom Eastern, anywhere that Chris will let me travel on Rehab Visions time, I will go and and talk about us, which is the freshest group of individuals, I think, since COVID, right? The first batch coming out since that period of time. So I'm hopeful for that. Rehab Visions has a professional team of five recruiters that are working every day to continue to fill our positions. They do text campaign, text campaigns, LinkedIn. And we are continuing to accept mentor and work with clinical PT students, OT students, and we can accept SLP students, because ours is still technically a student. But when he gets the Cs, you'll do the same thing. Did I miss anything on that?
Nope.
Can I just, what's the market for PTAs like? Is it as challenging as PTs?
Good question. Yeah. It's similar. I think that you're getting Chris's personal opinion a little bit right now. PTA programs are starting to be a bit more attractive to the high school students coming out because of the lower cost involved in schooling. So we are seeing more PTAs students come out of colleges, and they also are being sort of sold on the fact that they don't have to document as much as a PT would. So you are seeing some offices shift to more evaluation power with the PT and more treatment power with the PTA. As far as our recruiting efforts in the state of Washington, I haven't seen any type of trend with more PTAs than PTs in terms of applications coming in.
And then this is sort of the programming that our department offers right now. So just as, you know, big picture, every time I talk to a new applicant for our positions here, I do let them know that we are a rural healthcare setting. So anyone who comes into KVH into our department, they get to see everyone in the community, you know, from the little ones on order. But with that being said, despite the fact that we're a rural community, we do have strong specialized programming. So Brittany Harrington has been continuing to work as our pelvic health physical therapist, providing great care. We will be starting specialized sports rehabilitation with the individual who started last week, and I'm super excited for her to come in. Anne Merrill Stessel continues to provide excellent vestibular rehabilitation, and she is receiving referrals from Wenatchee, Yakima, Upper County. So people are coming to Ellensburg from quite a ways and for Brittany as well. So I should give her a shout out. So Brittany's getting folks to coming in from quite a ways away to include Yakima vestibular rehabilitation as well. Lymphedema, we're working with our physical therapist Jennifer, and we'll be training up our OT to increase that service line once our OT gets off maternity leave. Dry needling is something that we just were able to start with our new hire. Dry needling was just recently passed as something physical therapists could do with a special endorsement. And it is expensive to get the and requires someone who has had the endorsement for you to be able to get it, which is why none of us have done it, and she comes with the endorsement. So now we can do dry needling, which is pretty neat. And then aquatic therapy.
What is dry needling, in a nutshell?
Want to take a dry needling question?
Sure. You use acupuncture needles. You're targeting less of a holistic approach like an acupuncturist would do, and you're targeting specific trigger points in muscles, specific muscles. There's various techniques to help the muscles and the central nervous system relax. Generally, the treatment is short. Needles are put in, they're either pulsed in or there's electrical current to them. It's a short treatment that's followed up with physical therapy where you're using that muscle and you're strengthening that muscle afterwards. So I mean, if you talk to some of the dry needles often, they tell you it's good for everything. It's used for headaches a lot. It's used for chronic pain a lot, particularly in patients that aren't responding well to traditional treatments that we might provide. So we are excited to be able to do it. It does save your therapist's hands sometimes, too.
As far as difficulties, you know, we're living in a world right now where the supply and demand rehab industry is a little upside down. And in a way, I love it because of how much everyone loves PT. People really want us, and I love that. Unfortunately, there's just not enough PTs to support all of that, all the referrals. So we're so, you know, I was talking to the other senior leadership, you know, as we are looking for new hires and getting new folks, you know, we are, you know, we are figuring out the appropriate way to push people enough that they provide great care while at the same time not overburdening our providers, right? Because I also do not want to do that. So so this is challenging. But I don't think it's unique to physical therapy. I think it's probably something that's pretty common in a lot of fields in healthcare. The other thing that's a little challenging is, as Julie said, the staff that we had department does cover inpatient, and there is a pretty strong ebb and flow to the inpatient census, and despite that ebb and flow, it is important for us to be able to provide care there in the morning, whether there's one patient there or nine patients, we're going to see them. But sometimes I don't know when I leave tonight, there may be one patient for me to see, and tomorrow morning, there may be six, right? Or there may be one. If there's only one, that's lost opportunities for outpatient. If there's nine, I may be canceling people to see my hospital patients. And that's, some of that is I can't predict, right? I could predict elective surgeries that I need to see, but I can't predict that there's going to be seven people who fall on the ice, you know, in January. So that's a challenge, but we work through it. And then to the future, is what I was talking about. that's 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 a challenge, but we worked through it. Um, and then to the future is what what I was talking about earlier with um, on my journey to continue at seeing all of the, all of the um, the clinics in person, but also working with higher level H R probably um, with Janine, uh, when, 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 when people first come in as providers to tour our clinic. Because I think getting providers into the physical therapy clinic is the best way to sell the physical therapy clinic. Um, I think there's some power in explaining, like if I were to go to them. I think that I do an okay job at doing it, but it's not quite as strong as showing them the pool or showing the pediatric with with the climbing wall. Um, or just seeing rehab happen in real time, I think is a very powerful tool and as as K V H continues to grow um, and bring in new providers, we can sort of dust off the cobwebs and say like, no, actually we we provide great care, you know, um, and I've and I've seen it in action. So I think honestly, this is one of the most important things that I can do by connecting with the providers, new and old for that matter, or the the folks who've been here for a while.
You are the only aquatic therapy provider in the county. Is that correct?
I I I cannot say with, like, I don't know if someone takes their people to the city pool or not. Um, that may be a thing that's happened that I don't know of, but as far as I know, we are the only one um, that's doing it. And we are certainly the only one with a pool in their clinic.
Can you address the pediatric market? Are you, are, like, how well served is the pediatric therapy?
That's a, that's a specialty that is um, everywhere is doing one of those more inverse situations where as we realize that more children can benefit, especially like in the sensory areas. And then we get more referrals than we have providers. With that being said, I would say our O T and our S L Ps are doing a great job managing those. That's another reason why I want to have this conversation with people is that right now they do actually have that side, O T and S L P have have some access and getting getting those appropriate patients, the referrals, so they can come and receive the treatment they need is um, so we can fill, fill that need. Um, we do have some P T coverage as well on that. Um, Jennifer, who I mentioned earlier, also does pediatric care. But those, those O T and S L, I think that will knock that out of the park. And and all we have to do is let the providers know that their breadth of scope of practice allows them to do some amazing things that maybe they didn't realize they provided.
I'm sorry, I missed the strategy meeting earlier, so there's some like questions.
It's a great question too. It's a good one. And then to our last slide, this is, yeah, this is our last slide. So if any other questions?
Any questions?
Other questions? Say, Chris. Well, it's, I mean, it's the same uh, story that we're we're seeing everywhere. The demand is just, I mean, there's as much demand as as we can go after and just it doesn't seem to matter how many buyers we have, that it just keeps going, but uh, we appreciate you trying to keep up with the demand.
Sir. Any other questions?
In a perfect world, how many P Ts you think we would need?
That is a really good question. I, I mean, we were, we were talking about this and like, how how many do we need? Because that was a question that Rhonda and I were going over in the strategy, me, Rhonda and Jason were going over. I mean, I I would love to get three. We have two open positions. If we hired two, we're just going to keep one open and keep hiring. And honestly, I'm not going to stop until I'm at one week. And we're like, whoa, we're, you know, we we have too too many open spots now. So I I think that my, my, to answer directly, I would like to see three more, three more F T E.
I think three more F T E P Ts in the department would put the space that they're in, starting to get to capacity.
Yeah.
And at that point, if we were really driving more than three, we'd have to start looking out where where can we call these people?
Yeah, that's true.
To expand our space at that point.
Well, and if you'll recall a few years ago, re-remodeled that second building for speech and O T and and with kids in mind, I think. The person that's big.
You know, I'll just plant the kernel for the board of the commissioners. There is that great space that we can build in between the two buildings. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just plant the seed and water it.
That seventeen percent no show, what happens to that time slot with a no show?
Well, a couple of things can happen um, with a no show as opposed to a cancellation. With a no show, you don't, obviously don't know what's going to happen. So if you have your patient with you still, particularly with their thirty-minute schedule, then you can continue on because there's more services that can be provided to that patient. So Marcus actually talked to his staff again about that today um, to continue that treatment session on if your next patient doesn't show up. There are instances, Marcus mentioned that uh, patients like, I thought I only had thirty minutes. I got another appointment across town. I can't stay. But uh, extending the service past their regular visit is the goal. Yeah.
So seventeen percent, that means seventeen out of over a hundred slots, somebody does not show up, correct?
Or cancel, cancellation and no show. Yep, yeah.
Okay. And so how many total minutes? You can't fill backfill with keeping somebody an extra fifteen minutes. How many actual dead minutes?
Good question.
Whatever cat, you know, however you want to number it, just give me a scale and let me know.
Yeah, I'd have to, we'd have to look at those numbers. I mean, you you have to look at the math of like, what's seventeen percent of of eight hours?
It feels like it's one F T E based on the number of people you have.
Yeah. And 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 just for, to give, to give my staff some some credit, because this is a good question.
I'm not picking on you.
Oh, no, no, I, well, and and I I just, I just wanted to try to make us work. That's a very good question, like what is happening in that seventy percent, right? So our goal is to fill up every minute of their day. Um, and my goal is for every single one of those to be um, filled up. I I want zero open spots. Um, with that being said, I saw thirteen patients yesterday and I, you know, I had one open slot and I I I called doctors and did did some of the things that are required to make sure I'm in compliance, you know. So so there's a little bit of that going on, I'll say that.
But you're unique. You're the top of the pyramid.
Sure.
Worried about the people that.
And 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 those other folks, my, their primary goal then is like if they see that open slot, let's provide more care. You know, let's, let's, let us provide more care to the point where they don't need more care that that that.
So that goes back to my question. We know it's seventy percent no shows or cancellations. How many total dead minutes do we actually end up with once you do all the backfilling you?
That's a good question. I don't really have that in my head.
Really like to know.
Absolutely. We'll get, we'll get that number. Yeah, we'll start tracking that data.
Well, what's the industry norm for no show?
Sure.
Cancellations, is it a ten percent number or?
I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah.
And we do not charge even on a notion for no penalty to the patient.
Well, the, you guys do have a penalty if you miss uh, too many, then you cancel their.
So, so it's.
That's been on that list before.
Yeah. So, so, you know, and that, and that's a good conversation. I mean, this is really, really good conversation that probably a lot of clinics have had is like, what happens if if no no shows? And we're unique in that. Um, like if someone has an appointment at a specialist, that may be one appointment every three months, six months or a year. I may see my people once or twice a week and I may see them thirty-five times. So on that thirty-third appointment, like, what's, what's, what's the big deal, right? Which is, which is culturally a problem and it's not, you know, and so sometimes.
Charged them. They might have more awareness of what the.
Oh, no, I, absolutely. Yeah, yep. And and so what we do is we let them know, they they sign something that says like, if you no show twice, you're out. There are certain circumstances though with someone no shows because their husband had a stroke. Or, you know, there's, you know, so we have a little bit of grace, you know, obviously.
Percent people are not having family strokes.
Yeah.
Again, you get what I'm saying. I'd know the number of what the real waste is.
Yeah.
And if there's anything we can do to tighten that up.
Can I ask a question? You said that cancellations are included in that though. It's not just no shows. So when somebody cancels, what happens then?
We try, well, if they cancel.
They've given you notice ahead of time.
Yeah, so, so we have a big list of people who um, who we call. And we say, hey, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Mrs. Smith, you know, uh, we have nobody at three are able to come in. Typically with those types of lists, um, they need to be really long um, to 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 fill. Um, because I I don't know, I think the average, ever since I've been doing this, even back when I was at group health. Um, it's like every spot you need to call like ten people. And that that data point, that seventy percent only captures the cancellations that don't show, doesn't capture the ones that we refill.
If you fill it, that's not part of the seventy.
No, it it would be much higher if we counted those also.
Is that any cancellation or cancellations that occur within twenty-four, forty-eight hours?
It is any cancellation, even if right now that's even five minutes before they called. Yeah. We we are starting.
And for some reason it can't fulfill, it would also fall into that category.
Yeah, no, we we wouldn't count the one. Yeah.
I think two weeks they could probably fill.
I would.
Hope so, yeah. Yeah.
Question, are you doing a, like a call reminder the day before to confirm the patient's appointment?
So so we do the, the case text reminders, um, and that that goes out every um, for every evaluation and for every visit. But then we do personal, like front desk staff calls for every evaluation to make sure the evaluations come in, because those sometimes require just a little bit more one-on-one to make sure they know where they're going, make sure they have all the stuff set up. Um, and then once they come in, then we orient them to how they'll be reminded again.
But but for their follow-ups?
Yep, for the follow-ups. Yep, yep, they get, they get texts.
Very informative. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving on from presentation, we'll start our reports and dashboards with uh, Balli and Mandy Olson, they're chief of Balli Office. Mandy.
Hello, um, my report starts on page fourteen and I actually have quite a bit to add. So I'll try to be not too expansive, but I wanted to mention about um, the Quapi refresh. Um, just one of the things we're thinking about this year a little differently is that we're starting an annual reflection, but that doesn't mean that these Quapi projects or plans need to be limited to a year or it may, things may start and end at different times, which is a little bit um, different thinking for us. Um, but not limiting ourselves to a calendar year. So I'm really excited about that idea and I think that will feel better. I really am excited about this new Quapi process that we followed in the last year. But I think this will even make it better um, to be thinking about.
Mandy, I see the uh, competency Quapi is a good example. That was a project that emerged out of survey. It was authorized by the quality committee mid-year and that work is well underway and really teeing up a lot of work for next year as well. So that process of not sort of seeing our Quapi work bracketed within a calendar year, I think it's already started. So that was a really great example and people were very nimble about joining that effort. Yeah, so we're, I'm excited about that. I think that's going to be. Um, sometimes it feels like, oh, my gosh, we have to get this done by December and start something in January when that's not the natural flow of that work potentially or it just does, it's not going to happen in that way. So why are we forcing that on that? You know, annual calendar. So I'm really excited about that this year and um, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add about Quapi, but you will see that as board members after the drafts um, or revisions after our um, Q I council meeting in October. So those will be sent out to you for review and to give us feedback uh, before they come to Q I council in December. Uh, where uh, we will then determine as a council whether we want to recommend them to the board for approval at the December board January.
In my board report, I talk about um, kind of infection control surveillance that we do normally. And I just wanted to mention, um, you know, in that weekly report that Anna sends to the Kitata County uh, public health department. There is an increase in positive COVID tests and um, we've already exceeded the positive numbers that we saw in August. They are still lower than they were September last year. And I think I said that the positivity rate has increased. But that could also be related to the number of people being tested. And there are some challenges with uh, testing of respiratory viruses and insurance companies reimbursing for them. So we, that positivity rate may be falsely elevated by just lower testing. But there, there are slightly more COVID admissions right now. Um, a little bit more employee health calls than uh, previous weeks. So there's a lot of, a lot of COVID out there right now. Um, I'm sure you might be hearing that from friends or from other, from other folks. So um, we are seeing less of the other respiratory viruses, which is kind of surprising. I think there was one rhinovirus uh, last week and that was it, which is, but again, we might be testing less on all those other um, viruses than we had in previous years. Then last month, we had um, when we had talked about M P O X, I had told you that, you know, it's great to give you an update, but what our infection preventionists and the Department of Health in the state are really worried about is um, C oris. So I've um, provided a little blurb in there, but just some additional information I wanted to tell you about was that part of the reason they're so concerned about this is for people that are at risk or infected and have an invasive infection, about one in three dot. So it's, it's very concerning to um, our infection preventionists. Uh, and it was just discovered in two thousand nine and it's kind of hard to identify. Uh, you need specialized testing for it. So one thing that's also changed since my report is that the Department of Health last week came out with a recommendation that healthcare organizations need to screen and potentially isolate or test patients that are at high risk. So patients who have uh, been exposed to C oris, known exposures or are coming from a situation where there's an outbreak, like a nursing home that might have an outbreak. So um, the first case was just identified in Washington in January of this year, I believe. So um, we're just really, really nervous about it and um, Anna is working with the lab, um, just had a meeting this week to make sure we can, and they have some really great ideas for how we can test for that. And working with the health department on that. So.
What are the prominent, prominent symptoms of this?
Well, it depends on where it's infected. So if, if it's a bloodstream infection or, you know, a a skin infection that gets, like if you have a device and it it goes up a line, it um, it can be pneumonia. It just depends. And that's where we're seeing is people who have um, invasive devices or open wounds or are vulnerable people. So it's, it's really not that of concern for healthy individuals, but when you run a healthcare organization where you have folks that are vulnerable and at risk, that's, so we really want to make sure we can identify it. But when it's not being tested for out there and, you know, it's not known if healthy people have it, right, that could share it with others and it can live on surfaces. So it's reminding me a lot of what happened when MRSA was first coming out and and they actually put into law in Washington State that you had to swab high-risk patients. So admissions and certain types of surgeries, C C U patients, we used to have to swab for MRSA. We don't have to do that all the time anymore, but I think that's where it's going to go with C oris would be my guess.
Do you have other questions about? Did that help?
Is it detectable in a similar way, like a nasal swab? I mean, is it realized like in the nose or?
It's a swab in the armpits and the groin.
Okay.
A little bit different.
Yeah.
Swab, but. I think we'll chime in too if you know something.
I think the lab was thinking of ordering the special auger to be able to plate it and grow it. And that was their preference is that we do it ourselves rather than send to state because of the paperwork that's involved when you send it.
And I think the cost too was a lot different for our auger places.
Turn around a lot faster in-house.
It'd be faster in-house. Yeah. And so then we could determine if we even have C or, and then we can send it out for speciation, but that would decrease the amount of could just simplify it to identify other tests.
We've been on site that it can identify this particular.
Which is pretty great. I feel like we're kind of ahead of others.
Is that the cephalium?
Oh, no, we would grow it in the microbiology. Anything else about C oris? Anything else about C. Oris? Okay, I I don't have the exact numbers, but I see some of you got your flu shots tonight and I know that in the first day that Workplace Health did flu shots in the cafeteria, they had over a hundred employees vaccinated. So we're really appreciative of them and they're doing a great job. So thank you for getting your flu shot.
Yeah, Workplace Health is just running this program like a well oiled machine. So they're everywhere. So make sure you yell, I've already had my shot.
Eager, yeah.
You've got a goal.
So we're really appreciative of that partnership between Workplace Health and Play Health. I just want to mention that we do have a new risk manager. We are just more than thrilled in in our department. She has been already been a really incredible fit for us. So we're very excited about that.
Pick up from Yakal.
What?
Another pick.
Yes, yes. And I neglected to mention in my board report that this is National Fall Prevention Week. We have a falls team. Brandy Coates leads that team and they look at every single fall that happens and did like a mini root cause analysis on that and try to look at it from perspectives of the whole organization. Looking where we can increase interventions as well as providing communication to the staff or education. So there was announcements that went out this week for our, to our staff to help educate Fall Prevention Week, but I also understand that on our social media, there's things that go out on our socials. I already say that right. But that is get sent out there. And then the last thing is, is, well, it's not the last thing, or the last thing, sepsis was our deep dive on data for this month. So I just thought I'd talk about that a little bit. September sepsis awareness month, so it's a perfect month. That's another thing that is on KVH social media is awareness about sepsis. Because part of the reason sepsis is such a big deal is that it's under recognized and it progresses so quickly. It's estimated that eighty percent of people who of the deaths from sepsis could have been prevented by early detection and treatment. So making sure that community members are aware of what the symptoms are so they can get in to be treated. And then once they're here at KVH, we need to make sure we're identifying it quickly with the criteria, search criteria. And as soon as we do identify it, we have the team ready to go with all of the interventions. So that's part, a little bit of what we we measure. On the dashboard, our sepsis measure is a bundle. So there's the numerator is all the patients that receive all of the following. So it's within three hours of presentation of severe sepsis that they get initial lactate level measured. They get a broad spectrum or other antibiotics given, not just ordered given. They've had blood cultures drawn. And within six hours of presentation of sepsis, if the lactate is elevated, they get another lactate done. And within three hours of hypotension, if they have it, that they're given enough fluids to resuscitate them for their weight. And within six hours of septic shock presentation, if that hypertension, hypertension persists, they get vasopressors. And within six hours of septic shock and the hypertension persists, they get their volume status and tissue perfusion assessment misperformed. So all of those things have to be met for us to get a hundred percent per patient on that bundle. So you can see in the last three months, if you look at the dashboard, we did that for all of those patients, for those sixteen patients, all of those things as applicable to those patients happened. Hundred percent of each patient, each of those patients. We do well. And if you look at how we do compared to others, we perform really well, but there's, there's always room for improvement. One of the things that WISHA looks at and CMS and we look at is our sepsis mortality, so how many of our patients died. And that's where I think there really is a lot of opportunity and sometimes what we have frequently seen is patients are coming to us so sick that even if we perform perfectly on these bundles, they they don't survive. So that's one of the reasons it's so important to increase awareness in our community about sepsis, to get people to us quickly.
Mandy, when there is a miss, is it more likely to be just because it's gone over that time limit versus not happening at all?
Depends. This, where we frequently miss is the the second lactate. So they're here, they're getting treatment, which is like reassessing whether or not it's going down. So the second lactate and sometimes it's late, but sometimes we've missed it. I know there's been times we've missed blood culture. And I think that one was because it was supposed to be supposed, the blood culture is supposed to be done before antibiotics are given, right? And it was not. And then the antibiotic, I believe, has been delayed before, but not not given, was outside of the timeframe. So for, when this happens though, Bonnie is providing feedback directly to the clinicians involved and letting them know as well as it goes to the I believe the ED department meeting and then we haven't had enough cases on the inpatient side where it's, there's been case review at the RPG meeting, but that it would go there if we needed to talk about the case.
A hundred percent, three months in a row is pretty fantastic.
Yes. I think they're doing a great job. Do you have anything you want to ask after Martin?
Kudos for the hundred percent.
Any other questions about sepsis before we look at the dashboard?
Can I just mention in listening to Bonnie, whenever Bonnie talks about a mess and people start asking questions, she's already been out to the floor, talked to clinicians involved. I mean, she is, she's just all over. She's a zealot. And but she, there's no nudging involved. She finds these things and and she doesn't write memos, she doesn't write emails. She goes right out to the floor and engages with the clinicians and and I think that is really meaningful. It's a real learning moment, I think, when that happens and in great exchange.
Well, and it's really important to to identify like, is there an issue with an order set not working properly? Or that was some of the issue with the lactates is it wasn't automatically scheduling it. So like, how do we make it really easy for this to happen? So we'd never miss it. So she she learns that by talking with the staff too. Before we move on to the dashboard though, I don't have a deep data dive measure for next month. So I was hoping someone might have one for me they'd like to see in October or even November or December.
Sepsis, maybe we didn't get through on sepsis. We're all looking forward.
Does anybody have something in mind that they'd like to
Maybe as we talk through this.
Is there anything that you think that we should focus on?
Oh.
That you would really like to talk about that we haven't selected yet.
And the Medicare wellness visits would be interesting too, like. Popular with some patients out there and unpopular with others and what our process is and how Medicare kind of.
Yeah.
Stacy, yeah, we talk about it more at day meeting, so.
Like possibly the least popular free benefit Medicare is ever.
Well, I'm happy to pick something too, if you.
Well, I'm just, what was, I'm just curious, what you think? There's a lot going on behind the scenes or a lot to explain that maybe we don't get to. Is there a particular measure that you think would be particularly interesting?
Well, the fall risk screening measure, we've been at twelve, for twelve months, all the clinics are at goal. It's probably going to go away. So it might be worth talking about it before next year when we say. And and then I think you'll feel more prepared to say yes, that we can remove this from the dashboard too. The other one that's similar to that is the suicide risk assessment intervention and bundle, which I think Terry, you've had lots of questions about before and I don't think that's been the topic yet. So that's another one that I think would be a good one.
You could do both screenings on Terry. Yeah, I mean, we could do what Bob suggested in Medicare. Want to talk about that in October?
No hurry, just, I think it'd be interesting to see.
Okay. And then maybe November, since falls are going away, we could talk about that. That, does that sound all right?
Yes. Can I make a pitch for future, the critical lab values finally reporting, I think is it's something that surfaced during, I think it was the Jacob survey.
Yep.
Survey in the lab and it is the efforts they go to, and patients are already discharged. They maybe back on I ninety, the efforts that they go to to get those critical lab reports to patients and how they plug the holes of people involved, I think would be really interesting to hear about because frequently those patients are gone and labs back and go, oh, my gosh, we need to, we need this patient to follow up and and it's a lot of work and a lot of testing.
So we have Bob's suggestion, Julie's suggestion of the fall risk assessment and the suicide risk assessment. That's got us, got you for four months, right?
Takes us into the new year.
All right.
Okay.
So I think that that's good enough lead time.
On the dashboard, the hospital mortality has really gone up almost to fifty percent.
Let's, so do you.
Five percent.
Four point nine.
No, not fifty.
Four point nine.
Sorry, I'm just gonna like. Want to be here. That's not fifty percent.
So you, you good, Mandy, know what to, what to do for next month?
Yes.
So then, is there anything else before we turn to the dashboard? Okay. Is there anything you want to call our attention to on the dashboard specifically?
Well, since Terry brought it up, hospital mortality, three of those patients were septic. And two were respiratory failure. So.
What was the first one that you said?
Three of the, for hospital mortality, there were five patients, three of them were septic. So we were talking about sepsis. That it, there was sepsis mortality there and two were respiratory failure. So despite doing everything correct, they'll have mortality. So that five percent though is, it is a huge increase for us comparatively, but still well, it's below the Washington average.
Average, I mean, it just boggles my mind that there are some organizations that are well above that in order to establish that average. I mean, because most of the time we're well below, so somebody's got to offset that to the side.
But there are probably, if you think about the different risk of patients and the, you know, like a heart review or.
This is true.
Still feels like we could build an advertising campaign or anything.
I don't know. Yeah.
Well, this is all, I mean, we could, we could find out which places are death traps. All right.
Wasn't really anything else I specifically wanted to point out, unless you had questions.
Any questions about the dashboard, anything you'd like to, yes?
Sorry, I do have one other thing though. We did have, I know that median time to ECG is up, but at that same time, we had a patient, we identified this dummy and we got them identified so fast and out the door, door to balloon in a hundred twelve minutes and Bonnie was just raving about that care. So it got a little skewed and I did put in the report, but if you look at all of the ECGs we're doing though, we're still at ten point nine two minutes on average, which is great. So this is a small population of people that are included in this measure. It's a, it's a national measure. It's only people who have heart attacks. So it, it looks really like it's, it's really bad that month, but that was just like two patients that have these abnormally high times with unusual presentations, but the outcomes were really great.
But we just talked about restraints a couple of months ago, a few months ago.
Yeah.
But eight total, through departments and a hundred percent.
Well, so Julie brought up Bonnie. Bonnie has started helping with, and she was able to catch a few of these real time and get that documentation corrected in a moment with the patients.
That fall prevention is that you've been doing has been very good. Since I'm on the governance committee floor, WISHA at its last meeting, and I also sent you the the email. It was reported in twenty twenty one, there was thirty eight thousand facilities fatalities, not facility, fatalities for people over sixty five that fell. And then that same year, there was over three million fall related visits in the emergency department. But that was back in twenty twenty one. They were talking about that in the governance committee. And since we're having the, the, the National Fall Prevention Week was the twenty third through the twenty seventh and you discussed it and I think we're doing a good job in our quality to prevent fall prevention at KVH. So anyways, that was just something I.
Well, that's precisely why that was a measure in the clinics, because that's preventable harm. And if you can intervene with patients in that outpatient setting and with their PCP early on and help them understand the risks and identify the risks, then hopefully you can prevent falls. So that's and we're doing, you know, over our goal in all the clinics, the primary care clinics for three months. It's pretty, pretty fabulous.
And we will hear about that in an upcoming meeting. Anything else in the dashboard that anyone would like to talk more about or have questions about? Anything else, Randy? All right. Thank you very much. Move on now to our CEO report with Julie Peterson. Julie.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things to mention. My report, I had anticipated that we would have an opportunity to hear from the candidate, the likely next office or insurance commissioner for the state of Washington. Mike Cryler, as I mentioned, had been an insurance commissioner since the year two thousand, so this will be the first change in a while. Unfortunately, Senator Cutter was ill, so we had to cancel that and that will be rescheduled. So an opportunity for hospitals really to maybe forge a new relationship with the state commissioner. The other thing I wanted to mention was the foundation met, I think on Tuesday of this week. And they have a number of changes to their board. This is the month where they re-up for another term on their board, so we did have a number of changes, new faces and some people who are retiring off. But Jason and I were there to receive the check for four hundred and eighty one thousand dollars, by far the most the foundation has ever donated. Four hundred and five of that is their annual contribution. The others, the balance of that was targeted contribution. So we will present them with a list of equipment and they will select from that list the things that they want earmarked for us to spend the four hundred and five thousand dollars on. But a huge shout out to that group. They did some outstanding fundraising around Tough Enough to Wear Pink. I think this is one of the biggest years they've ever had. They've worked with us to help increase sponsorship for their gala next year. So we're looking forward to really continuing that relationship and more big checks in the future.
No, that's, I mean, that's, I was at that meeting. It's impressive, like they've been really diligent investing those funds and put them in the right place and really focused on trying to help the hospital out. Different way. So it's like, they work hard. They work really hard to.
It's a mighty group, but only six times a year.
Right.
They made a change too, to send out a letter to all of our vendors asking for support to our foundation. And we did that months early before the next budget cycle. So I hope to see a reasonable return on that. And I have heard back from a couple of the vendors and they appreciated our letter and outreach.
Yeah.
And personalized signed letters. That was a nice touch.
Yeah, good leadership at the, at the top there.
What are you smiling?
Um, the next item is I'm requesting the appointment of Suzanne Johnson as the compliance and privacy officer. As you know, Cindy Kelly, Dick Kelly had been filling that combined role for a couple of years. As you know, Cindy Kelly, Dick Kelly, had been filling that combined role for a couple of years. She retired from KVH on September second on a relatively short timeline. Suzette or Susie had been her right hand person in terms of compliance. Um, so she was able to step into that role very with a very, very smooth transition. We will be putting a development program together. We have a new job description and have sat down, spoken with Susie about this. We'll have a development program for her for the next couple of years and we'll focus on privacy, but Matt and I have already had an opportunity to work with her on a case and she never hesitated, jumped right in. Um, I would just point out that the compliance and privacy officer is a unique position or actually not entirely unique. It's similar to Dr. Hoppy's position, that it does have a direct line to the board, briefly to the CEO, that has a direct line to the board in terms of reporting. So I am asking for the appointment of Suzette Johnson as compliance officer and privacy officer.
Are we looking for a motion?
Uh, yeah, are there, do people have questions before we before we take a vote, do you need to know more about? Okay, then, yes.
I will move that we appoint Suzette Johnson as a privacy and compliance officer.
Our motion from Eric, the second from John, any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Suzette Johnson as the privacy and compliance officer, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. At least any questions for Julie before we move on to the HR report and the expansion project? All right, so Janine Redding is going to do our HR staff development report, it's on pages twenty two and following.
I just wanted to call your attention to the tables that we've been recording. We are going to be updating these a little bit as we move forward. So with the employee population, you're going to see that morph into a workforce population. And the reason why that's important is the healthcare delivery, the the operations of the hospital are more than just the employees collecting a paycheck who are paid by KVH. We have contractors, students, interns, vendors, or not really vendors, but partners, business partners who have access to the hospital that we still have to maintain compliance, education, various types of records. When we went through COVID, we had to have health records on everybody. And so it's important that we kind of take a step back and look at the whole workforce population as opposed to just those who are actually employed with a with a W two. And so we're going to be updating that. And then it it also helps us kind of get our head wrapped around what what sort of system requirements do we need for for all of those things? So as we go down the road of new HRIS systems, new information systems, tracking systems, compliance systems, how many seats do we really need? Well, we can't just rely on the employee number headcount anymore. We need to kind of have a full, full view of the workforce as a whole, so we're going to be presenting that. So we just have a really good idea of really who's in the hospital, who are we managing? And that, so we'll be doing that moving forward. On the turnover table, we did promise you that we would add the student turnover to that. We didn't have any in August, so that's why we didn't, we didn't add it, so, but it will be, we did have some, we will have some to add to the next report, so you will see that on there. And then we do have a small correction to the general recruitment on the third column over where it says the twenty, June twenty three, that actually is June twenty four. A little bit of cleanup work on that, so thank you, John, for for calling that to our attention, we'll get that cleaned up. Um, on the recruitment efforts, we're pretty happy to see some hot jobs come off the come off the list, respiratory, the per diem respiratory therapist was one, that one had been open since twenty twenty three, so we're pretty excited to get that one knocked out of the park, as well as the per diem chaplain for hospice as well, that's, that's a big need over there, so we were very happy. Yeah, to see that come off. Um, on our staff and leadership development, we're going to see that morph into more of a curriculum model. One of the things that we've been talking about is right now we have sort of à la carte offerings, we'd like to see a little bit more of a career track or or a support track for the various types of leaders that we have kind of coming up through the ranks, because we want to make sure that we can meet them kind of where they're already at. People coming new into the system like myself or Pam, for example, may not have the same needs necessarily as someone who's grown up through KVH and is moving from a peer to a management position, and they're going to need a little bit different type of love and support. And so we want to make sure we have career tracks and and offerings that can speak to that. So you'll see that coming in the coming weeks. Some of the offerings would be the just culture training model, we're taking a look at that. Blue EQ is another one that we're looking at, which talks about psychological safety and emotional IQ in the management field, just managing in a different way that speaks to just culture, so that everything is sort of supporting the other work that we're doing. Um, and then wellness. So when we were looking at the wellness offerings, we're going to be tying that also to our benefits group. What we found was we have our EAP benefits through our insurance, Parker and Feek brokers, but it's kind of separated from the wellness on the internet page and we have the new Intranet Ken, which will be able to kind of pull that into one stop shopping for the employees as well. And the other thing that we have asked for is a social determinants of health through them. Um, so you might be familiar with that through community health assessments and that sort. But this is a diagnostic of social determinants of health for our employee population. And the what we're going to be looking at is, do we have good alignment with that and our benefits offering, including our wellness objectives? So we hope to be able to report out on that as well. And last but not least, on our hospice volunteer program, we were able to check and verify that we are meeting our CMS requirements to provide volunteer services above and beyond the five percent. And we are currently sitting at about seventeen percent, which is wonderful.
With a question, so looking at our time to fill average. I mean, that's a pretty significant improvement from May to August. Is there?
Well.
Can you attribute that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I I suspect that may, when Jen was I think it may have to do with some of the longer standing openings. When those fall off, when those months fall off, it's gonna, it's gonna push your time to fill to a lower amount. So for example, when the one position that we had was a per diem position, it had been open since twenty twelve. Yeah, then you're going to see some big, big jumps there. What interests me, I might add to that point, just to kind of get a how do we, how do we look in the long run is to have these reported out with a table as well, so you can kind of see trending reports with the goals and see where we're at. When you're looking at time to fill as well, I'd also kind of like to take a look at time to hire. So time to fill will tell you, okay, have they accept, how long does it take you for them to accept the job? I'm also interested in how long does it take you to get them from job acceptance to on the floor? User provisioning, how fast is that background check? Those are all things that are all within our control too, and that can help compress that down a little bit.
When there are more hot jobs filled than posted, is that a little bit of overlap from the prior month that? Or did we just get really lucky and get extra?
No, some of that was internal movement, so if you had someone moving from, say, a med search position to, let's say, a CCU position, the CCU position may have been a hot job, but movement internally is what filled that.
I see.
But I think her question is, there was four posted, but we filled six spots.
Well, you have, so a posting is a requisition, but the requisition may have two seats associated with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. But that's a good call out. You know, we can easily extrapolate, you know, how many, how many seats are we actually recruiting for as opposed to how many requisitions are out there? So we can certainly extrapolate that data.
For my purposes, I would, if you have ever have just some extra detail about something that was particularly interesting to you about a certain job, you just want to call that out that.
Oh, sure, and I think I'll be in a little bit better position to do that, so this data is still from August, so I.
Wish so much.
Started, yeah. Yeah, but but I I agree with you. I think I'll be able to speak a little bit more eloquently to the minutia of the data as we go forward, but right now I'm just kind of looking at how do we reformat the the data to to show us moving in a in a positive direction.
On the the general recruitment, the date on June is wrong, it should be twenty four instead of twenty three.
Yeah. We called that out, but thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Janine? Next up then, we have the expansion project update with Wayne Tivis.
I don't have anything in the packet today. Where we are at on the expansion project currently, we have almost completed bases, my book base is a two A, two D and two C, which includes a portion of surgery, recovery and materials management. We have received our temporary certificate of occupations for recovery and I believe Amy is going to be able to start making use of it early next week. We have a little bit of movement as far as taking some equipment out and bringing some more equipment in. We have come, we thought we were going to be able to occupy two C this week, but we missed a couple of things in order to get a call for our temporary occupation on it as well. We look at probably early in next week on it. These, this is a fantastic thing for me because it's, we're ahead of schedule on these items. And so with some of the movements that we have, some of the other companies we have scheduled to come in and do some installations and stuff, we won't be pushed as hard to prep for them as far as moving furniture and everything like that, so I'm enjoying that aspect of it. It's also making it a little easier for us to help whether where we found some issues in our data closet or in electrical that was running, it gave us some time to manage that and have it prepared prior to us trying to go into phase three, which would take over the second half of packaging.
So can you share the contingency budget? How are we dealing with it? Do we still have a cushion and so forth?
We do. I I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number.
So you're not going to like my next question.
Uh-oh.
I was going to, do you know what percentage we've paid off on the the overall contract versus how much we have left to issue checks for?
No.
And I can work with Jason on it too separately.
Yeah, we're we're getting up there, so spending.
Getting up there in a sense, we paid a lot of it down.
Spending is way slowed, so our our cash balance is actually going up now.
Because we're not writing so many checks?
Not as fast, yeah. Unless unless some contractors are holding on to invoices and throwing us, which happens on occasion, so I'm nervous that.
We have limited, eliminated a lot of the change order invoices and really narrowed down the number of change order invoices that are currently even sitting out there waiting for answers. We disputed some that we felt were not correct and.
The the way on that is Wayne, as the working day and night, the contractors to sort through that pile.
Yeah, we've, we've made it clear and the architects and the contractors have been agreed with us, but, you know, it was on their side to take care of it.
And how's the phrase it since we're on public record?
Water feature?
Yeah, no, no, just, you know, I think I really heard when we started with Walker, really, really good relationship. Have we maintained a pretty good relationship? All things considered, it's a complicated project, people.
It it is a very complicated. It's in coming in, you know, after about two thirds of it was already completed, there was a lot of history for me to find out about it. And some of these COPs and these requests for information and everything went all the way back to, excuse me, all the way back to February. And I didn't start until May, so I spent a lot of time going back to those, because neither architect or contractor were willing to make a decision on it. So it was sitting out there in some aspects, it was delaying some stuff for us. And so I spent a lot of time deep diving, as Miss Olson would say. You know, going back and finding all I could. I don't know if you all know Randy Kaiser, he's been a fantastic gentleman to work with and he, he's been excellent to give me a lot of, you know, where some of this came from. The relationship is, is like with any other contractor, for the most part, it has its ups and downs.
When do you currently believe we'll fulfill the contract and will be essentially totally done? Do you have a sense of that?
My intention is to have full market in February, late February, March.
Excellent. Well, thanks. And yeah, like Julie said, thanks for all your efforts getting up to speed. I know coming in the middle of a big project is exhausting, so.
Okay, any other questions for Wayne? All right, thank you, Wayne. Anything else, Julie? Okay, then we'll move on to operations and the first report to Amy Croxton is here, Amy.
Thanks for having me. DeeDee is enjoying some well deserved time off. So just a couple of highlights, I think our report starts on page twenty four. I really think it's nice to call out frontline folks, so just a couple of people in the surgical department, our tech, Ashley SMC finished her certificate as a GI technical specialist. So we welcomed her on the staff and she completed her certification really quickly. Uh, in the ED, there was a Daisy Award that was received by Danny Piper, who actually stopped on the side of the road to help someone during a motor vehicle accident. And two of the crash victims were actually able to attend her ceremony. Um, and really, I think Jenny spoke to us a little bit earlier. Amy Morris is a finisher, third week of the interim director of FDP, and it can be difficult to make a transition from peer to manager, so just congratulations to her for surviving the first two weeks program. And with that being said, there is a pause in the clinical education of the NAC students, but the second cohort of students had all passed their NAC exam. So congratulations to her there as well. That's just kind of what I wanted to bring out. I'm sure you have questions about expansions. I'll just field questions and set it up.
Any questions, Randy?
So I've got a question on the emergency department, the fourth bullet point, statewide bed capacity is becoming a major challenge again. So that the hospital beds, a lot of these places are full or over? And it it seems to indicate ours is impacted too, but it says it continues to impact our own ED. Why does hospital beds being full elsewhere impact our ED, just out of curiosity?
It makes it difficult to transfer patients.
Okay, so they get backlog here, because normally we move transferring, but those hospitals are full, so they just stay here parked until we figure it out?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which we've experienced before and it seems to be increasing again.
How's our own census in our hospital?
Running fairly full. To the point about backlog, our record to date, I believe, is having to call forty seven hospitals. Take a transfer. There was a period where where certain GI procedures aren't as reliable, transfer.
There was a period where, where certain GI procedures aren't as reliable. Transfer was tied to falls. Yeah, it's. And this is done the old fashioned, you literally call. Yes. Boy, this feels like a business opportunity somewhere. Uh, wishes tried to capitalize on that and I wish you better luck. Yeah, it just seems incredibly inefficient, but. It is. But it's the way it's done. And so when we try, when we try to set up online clearinghouses to establish where beds are available. They're at best, you know, they, they might be eight hours old. They might be twenty-four. So inaccurate that it doesn't fix anything. Mm-hmm. And, uh, we can talk about trends, but, um, it's we are the victims of our economics. We've tried to be very, very efficient in terms of how we build hospitals. And we're learning that that's kind of like being efficient and how you build fire stations. As long as you don't need them, it's fine. Exactly. Yeah. And when you do need them, it's too late to build one.
Just a little comment from experience, but my daughter, when she was born, had to be transferred. And I think feeling victim is a good sense of that. Patients really stuck right there in the middle as the physician's calling multiple places. They're like, I think we got you in. No, call back. No, no, you call another one. Uh, and.
Is it literally the physician doing the calling?
Yeah.
So that also seemed really.
At least my, my.
Usually is from the ED. It usually isn't.
Yeah, okay.
And sometimes it's, they might have a bed available, but they might not have the staffing.
Yeah.
Just frustrating.
Secretary might call though, but then once they get a hold, uh, often they do have to have.
Doctor to doctor, so to speak.
Yeah.
Confirm what's needed and part of the process is in order to transfer patients, there has to be a receiving physician, which needs a conversation. If we just ship somebody to somebody else's, uh, ED, that is the definition of an intellivire violation. And with these hospitals being, uh, at capacity, getting worse, getting better, what, what's the trend line we see? I mean, run in the winter, which is, feels like it's going to get worse, but that's the expectation.
The other thing I would say is, is once they say yes, we'll take your cardiology patient or X kind of patient, um, then you get to call an ambulance and see if there's a unit available.
See also get transport involved to get it.
So, um, because they're not going to leave that bed in deeper.
Even the skilled nursing facilities, they'll, they can, they can choose who they want, you know, because. Do they do it from a financial standpoint? Who's the most lucrative patient or? Maybe it's not. No, they wouldn't do that. That might be.
The transport piece is a good, good point to make too. And that, that in my example, it was as well, like, you know, we were separate children. We couldn't build to children's, we couldn't get transport. So then it ended up, that's Yakima, then ended up in Spokane. But it took, it took some time and, yeah, helicopter. And then it was changed into an airplane and, yeah. Yeah, no stress there. Right. Intense, but also amazing to see everybody work together. So.
John, serious answer to your question is a lot of it is contractual. Not every payer contracts with every nursing home. Humana notoriously, uh, contracts with one or two buildings. The nearest one is, I believe, Zilla.
Does that come into play before you even start making calls like, who, who's going to pay for this?
Well, the discharge planners, you know, if you're, we're sending somebody to a sniff that's from the floor. And they have a good sense of, I don't even need to bother making this call.
Yeah.
And this is Humana at the Medicare Advantage level of Humana. And that ties into why we're trying to educate our population that you have to be aware that there's this huge limitation because you chose this. So.
Okay, but what was that about Zilla again?
I think that's the nearest, uh, Smith that, uh, Humana is contracted with.
Yeah, and we've even reached out to Humana and asked and tried to require that they contract with our Snips and they go. You just can't get anybody to really listen. It's like they don't even understand what that need is and means to their members.
Yeah, we have apps that will tell you where the police are, but we don't have apps that tell you what availability there is and. A lot of times the folks we're dealing with, um, think that just send them to the one actually, that's thirty-five miles. Well, yeah, thank you everyone for filling me on that. It's very helpful.
Any other questions, uh, for Amy? The DeeDee's report? Thank you, Amy. Uh, next up we have Ron DeHolme, our chief ancillary officer, Ron De.
Yes, my report is on page twenty-six and despite it saying May twenty twenty-five, the top it is actually September. Don't know where that's from. They sound so nice. Um, under rehab services, I just wanted to, uh, talk about Sammy, our new physical therapist that will be joining us in Clealum. She does have, um, specialization in pediatrics, which was something we don't have here. So those patients could potentially go there to her. She's also certified in neuro and vestibular, just like Ann Merrill Stetzel. So, um, it's really nice to be able to have that in, in Nupper County. And she starts October twenty-first. So really happy to have her. Um, for home-based primary care, we do have a per diem, uh, GNP applicant and we're excited about that. And we also do have a full-time, uh, ARNP that is considering it. Uh, she's also looking at adult and internal medicine. Um, but hopefully we'll be able to boot her over to the right side. Um, as far as Mary leading, we've been making plans, uh, working with marketing. I'm getting a letter out to patients, providers, some assisted living facilities. And then looking at where we can transition the patients. Uh, Mary Cami does have a lot of wound care patients. So we'll be sending those obviously to Mary Newans. Um, and then Dr. Stone is going to take her pain contract patients and be seeing those as a primary care provider. So we, we whittled it down to less than fifty patients that we're still, um, hoping that, you know, if we can bring on our per diem person, that, that would be a nice caseload, uh, for them to manage. And as far as imaging, I, uh, we do have an opening now for an MRI tech. Um, and just I want to call out how wonderful our staff has been in MRI to pick up the slack. Um, pick up the extra days, work overtime and cover so that we can have good coverage for MRI. And also, um, our ultrasound techs changing their hours of work so that, um, we can have as much coverage as possible.
And he says how challenging it is to recruit an MRI.
We have a really strong applicant, which was just amazing. I, I don't know, posted today and had a really great applicant. And we do have a good applicant now too for an ultrasound technician. So really excited if we could get those filled. We have an applicant that wants to work for ultrasound Friday, Saturday.
Are you crazy? You are jing. I wouldn't even say that out loud to do that.
I know, super excited. We'll, we'll see. That's all I had for updates. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Ron? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Beckman, how, any updates? I mean, it sounds like it's very close to being.
Going really, really well. Yeah.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting. And, and they do have apparently another component to that that you can add to.
They're, they're going to donate it to us?
Uh, no, but I think we would have to bust down walls to be.
I was gonna say, I think we, from a length standpoint, we're.
I've already told Katie though.
It looks like they found a spot for a pharmacy up in Nupper County.
They have a location that they'd like to use, but the city is requiring them to do a lot of work. Yeah. And so that maybe, it may not be feasible for them to do all that work. They're trying to get bids at this point.
The expense of meeting those requirements is about double what they expect.
Yeah, and they're still working on sets and finalizing that and then planning on how they could get the resource to get together to do that. And then they have alternative second plans, backup plans too.
But they described it as full steam ahead. I mean, there's barriers.
They want to find a solution. They wished that they, they were hoping they had a drive-through and full shelves and full patients.
Modify your drama, ER triage, modify your drama, ER triage.
Yeah, I'm confident they will get something up there though.
Yeah, I think they will.
Any questions for Ron? Thank you, Ron. And then, uh, next up, uh, sitting in for Stacy, oh, there is Stephanie Walker. Stephanie.
Thank you so much for having me. Uh, my report starts, or Stacy's report actually starts on page twenty-nine. Uh, Stacy had, as you will see, um, you know, smothered throughout the report. We have lots of, of, um, examples of new providers coming and joining our teams. So Stacy really wanted me to focus on that and of course the access that this creates. At FME, we have, uh, four providers, which is a three point five FTEs, cause Dr. Naomi Swain is a point five. Um, that's going to be added compared to twenty twenty-three, uh, which is over two hundred more appointments a week, which is wonderful. Um, at my own FMCE, we are adding a new physician. We have waited very patiently one year since she has signed her contract for her to join our team and it's Dr. Ashley Folkers. Uh, she is a DO and we are, she will be starting, um, October seventh, which is great. And women's health, um, will be HD, as I listened to Julie's report, um, who have given three OBGYNs as signed up, which will give us the ability to do DYN surgeries once a week, which is a real, a real wonderful addition. Absolutely cheering that one on.
For that also.
Absolutely.
Good we said Dr. Johns, I think was seven. Like the, they're looking at nine, seven to nine of everyone. So they have a whole day of two plans.
So far he's had two little days and filled both of them. Oh, our day pre-planned or un.
Yes, pre-planned, yeah.
It's, it's pretty rare that a GYN case is emergent account, but we have backlog of, of planned cases. And we're able to keep them in the county before they'd have to look at going out of the county to.
And Dr. Johns has been a really wonderful addition. Um, patients are following him here and heard that from multiple people. Happy to see that he's part of our staff. He has a huge following, which is wonderful. For internal and adult medicine, uh, the team of four permanent time providers come for the end of this year, which is, as you all know, we have, they have really struggled in that clinic. And so this is really wonderful. Our patients are so happy to be able to call and get an appointment and establish with the new provider. So this is just fantastic. And then supporting all of this, um, as you know, our MA apprenticeship program has been very successful. We continue to participate in this program every quarter and you bring on one to four any apprentices. Just at FMCE, I have a total of six, uh, MAs. One just went off to nursing school, so an apprentice will be taking her place. Um, and then the, all my other MAs are graduates from our MA apprentice program. And they did their work up in Clealum and just wanted to stay. So I think about this all the time. What would we have to do without this program? I mean, we have folks that are dedicated to the patients in our community. Uh, they love working in Clealum. Most of them live in Clealum. And so it is, it is a fantastic program. We just get great employees out of this program. And our nursing team, as I believe Stacy has probably reported out in the past, um, we have Jamie George and our, uh, uh, director of nursing has really worked hard to, um, kind of unsilo. You know, nurses work in various, um, clinics and they work together cohesively. Uh, we have remote triage and they cover all the points. So we're able to really stay on top of the messages that come in. We get, oh gosh, let me see, twenty-seven hundred triage messages throughout at the clinics just for the month of August. Which is a lot of messages to respond to. And I listen to our triage nurses. They could be on the phone for thirty plus minutes just with one patient. Really making sure that, you know, there's a, there's clear understanding and that their needs are met. And if you need to schedule an appointment, that that is taken care of. So really great work, uh, for our nursing team. And then of course our PSRs just keep the lights on and answering those phones and scheduling patients. So I have, see me.
I have a question for you. First of all, thank you for being here. The five minute late policy, is that organization-wide Clealum here or is that all clinics?
It's all.
All clinics across the organization.
So we do all adhere to, adhere to that policy?
Okay. And then, um, do we have any data on whether that's helping providers maintain their schedule better?
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
There was a lot of social media attention to our five minute late policy over the last couple of days. And I want to thank Stephanie and Colin in particular, because I, they met this morning and I sent an email out to the clinic managers. Um, asking them to, to weigh in on how this feels to the patient, what are they caring, what's helping? And I got a, a very, very complete report from that team through Stephanie and Colin. Um, and we're going to put marketing together with the clinic management team, the folks on the front lines to talk about how it is absolutely necessary that we keep that patient pool happening in the clinic. But how can we message it better? And, you know, how can we make sure our patients know, you know, that, that once the patient that's behind them gets taken back, it, it really is a matter of rescheduling. And they go to great lengths to reschedule those patients as soon as they possibly can. But I think there's a messaging issue. And, um, so we're going to put marketing together with operations and figure out how we can do a better job of letting people know how important that is. So.
But we do think that it's a valuable tool. It's showing benefit to keeping providers on schedule.
Absolutely.
I imagine most case. Um, and then options for patients if they have a family member who, who found out about the five minute one.
There's rapid access. Yeah, it does. Um, rapid access. And then again, rescheduling as soon as they.
Sure.
Can. So they.
So the, the tension is always in, in the clinic practice. Uh, do you inconvenience the one patient that was late with all of the patients scheduled after them? And it has a cascade effect. And that's what they're trying to manage. And there is no perfect answer.
And no one's staring at the clock going, nope, five minutes. It, it is a matter of blow. And have the next patient stand back and match. How disruptive is it going to be? So a lot goes on behind the scenes before that triggers action.
But I think one of the pressing questions, uh, and I don't know if there's a answer for this, using it. Calibrated, uh, like a clock. Are we all in same minute schedule, I guess, as if my clock?
Cell phone clock.
Yes, my, um, family member has said, if my clock says, well, you know, it can be bigger clock isn't.
Well, we're gonna throw marketing and operations in the room together and lock the door. Uh, they will come out with a, a solution, uh, that really does answer that they, it is more patient facing. And again, just make sure that we're getting that information, we're messaging.
Should it be you be on time and will we, so like if you're not soon within ten minutes, your visit's free sort of thing?
That might be part of the, the text messaging when they, when we confirm an appointment and say, gonna be more than, you know, next one is late. Let us know so we can schedule.
It could be.
And there's no option for them to just sit in the lobby and if something comes up next hour so they can get in?
Absolutely.
Cause again, just looking for ways to take the edge off a little bit, because that's social media did. I don't even pay attention to social media, but people were showing me like this is really blowing up.
We got over two hundred comments.
Yeah, and I'm sure they were all positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, we worked hard in order to try and get folks in either the same date or the next day. And you're right, we have patients that, you know, they were ten minutes late to their appointment. Go ahead and have a seat. We're gonna see what we can do. Chances are somebody else, you know, in the next hour or so.
Could be late or something.
Or they're gonna no show and that.
So I think yes, that middle ground. Warn them, we might not be able to, but we will really try. But it's just take that edge off of that hard. Two bets, you know, you just have to reschedule.
And our, our, our front staff, our front desk staff does work really hard to accommodate our patients. And, um, I think, I think they do a really nice job with this. And I agree, I think working with marketing on just getting the word out there that, that we do have this five minute policy is the way to go.
Yeah, I just call, my, my experience was exceptional. I mean, they explained it and it was well received. And I was, I was not one percent. It was for my son and my wife were there, but it was behind the scenes. So, um, yeah, I, I thought it was well. And I think our staff did well. And it is not something that they like to do by any means. So they do that because they have to.
It's not a gun.
Behind the scenes. Yeah.
And I was just, oh, sorry. Yeah. And a lot of patients, you know, we call them the day before. My scheduler's reminding them to remember that the policy we have and despite being reminded, either the same people are showing up ten minutes late. So there's always two sides to that.
Definitely, yeah.
We thought that might come up this.
You did.
Other, uh, questions for Stephanie?
Thanks for participating.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you. Both for coming. And you too, Ron. All right, um.
Next up, we're moving on to medical staff and Dr. Hoppy, before you start, I just want to say a couple of things. Uh, Dr. O'Brien, can you hear us? I'm going to talk about you for a second. I assume that's him. Anyway, Dr. O'Brien. Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good. I'm going to say a couple of things about you here. Timothy O'Brien, MD will be retiring on October 17th. Five days before his 84th birthday. Oh, look, we have pictures. While in college, Dr. O'Brien, sorry, I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to talk about you and, and maybe embarrass you for a minute here. While in college, Dr. O'Brien played varsity ice hockey, varsity golf and intramural wrestling. He went on to graduate from the University of Minnesota School of Medicine in 1966 and completed his internship in 1967. After graduation, he enlisted in the US.
Hey. Hey Matt.
Yeah, go ahead.
Graduated from MIT.
What? Graduated from MIT?
MIT? All right, I'll talk to, uh.
Yes.
I'll talk to someone about that.
Yeah, don't forget that.
That's not a minor detail.
Yeah, all right.
I think we're giving you an honorary.
We're giving you an honorary degree. Yeah. That's not even the, the abbreviation there isn't even MIT. All right, after graduation, he enlisted in the US Army. Do we have that right? US Army, not a different country's army? Okay, good.
Yes.
I was stationed in Okinawa from 1967 to 1969. While there, he worked one year in the outpatient, yes. One year in the outpatient department and one year as Director of Special Forces Dispensary. Upon returning to the States, Dr. O'Brien completed his residency and fellowship program at Hennepin County Medical Center specializing in renal transplantation. Before coming to KVH, Dr. O'Brien worked at Okanagan Douglas County Hospital, 1991 to 1995, and Lake Shalan Community Hospital, 1984 to 1996. Dr. O'Brien started his career at KVH in October of 19. Did I get that? Did I get some? Go ahead.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I mean, as long as I'm giving these accolades. And I'm not. I'm not one to, I'm not one to, you know, promote my own self, but actually I was the top transplant, kidney transplant session specialist in the world. Documented by Kidney International. We had basically almost a hundred percent success rate on kidney transplants, mainly because I paid attention to every detail of every patient. I'm just saying, that's me.
So in our defense, can I say we're trying to throw this man a party and he won't let us? We tried to do a, I even tried to get him to come in person tonight. So he's a hard man to praise.
We can go to his house.
We did. So the, yeah, I remember Dr. O'Brien, when I, when I came here, I remember your, your reputation sort of getting around that. People, people said, said to me, hey, I don't think you realize, you may not realize how good the docs are here. And they brought you up as an example as, as being, you know, the top guy when it came to, you know, kidney transplant. So anyway, that, your reputation was, was known then and, and it's good to get the word out even then. So you started at KVH. Yeah, go ahead.
As long as we're, as long as we're doing this accolades. I was actually the surgeon that made the first double lung transplant possible in the world, which I took part in. But my first year residency, solving the problem of how to keep lungs healthy outside of the donor, just, just another thing.
That's good stuff.
No, me too.
So you started at KVH in October of 1995 as a locum. You were officially hired in January of 96. You were Chief of Staff here from June 2012 to December 2022, so over 10 years. And while, while here, you, you were also Chief of Surgery. I remember, and I think most of the people here remember when we celebrated your retirement as Chief of Staff. That was a, that was a good, but thank you for letting us throw you a party then, anyway. And I have a fun fact about you that in your spare time, you would breed and train golden retrievers. Is that right?
Yeah, breeding, training, showing, competing, but there is one other thing I would like to add.
Yeah.
That I'm most proud of. And that is coming here to Ellensburg, which when I was in Shalan, I heard from everyone in the state that Shalan, that Ellensburg is the greatest place to be. So I came here and we were under some stress at the time. And I'm most proud of getting the awesome board that we have now in power.
Well, thank you. But this is your moment. And we can, we can lavish praise on the board after the break whenever it was left. So 28 years.
And Julie, wait, 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 and Julie too. She is awesome.
Stop deflecting attention. It's 28 years of service to our community, Dr. O'Brien, 28 years. And, and I know that I speak for the whole board and, and everybody here that when we express our deep gratitude for all the work you've done and, and how much you've invested and how, how you've made the place, not only KVH, but the community, a, a better place for you having, having worked here and, and having been part of the community for so long. So thank you very much, Dr. O'Brien.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate your appreciation.
You are a true treasure in this community, both professionally and my family owes a lot to you. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. O'Brien, this is Terry Clark. Thank you again for being such a wonderful surgeon.
Is there, we'll let you have the last word, Dr. O'Brien, if there's anything else you want to say.
Yeah, my last word for all the providers to come after me is number one, listen. Listen. Listen to the patient. They will tell you exactly what they need and what problem is, if you hear adequately. Anyway, that's my, that's my main message in life, is to listen to other people and and love everybody. Understanding their different paths in life. That's, that's me. I thank you all for keeping me employed. And anyway, thank you all. Beautiful.
Well, thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
Okay. Now we have to move on to the actual business here of the board, but yeah, that's a, it's a great, great career. All right, Dr. Hoppy, you're up then.
All right, well, my report is on page 32. The Medical Executive Committee met and reviewed a total of 13 credentialing files. Six were initial appointments and seven were for reappointments. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Everybody's had a chance to review these online?
Yes.
Any questions for Dr. Hoppy? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the initial appointments and reappointments as, as listed on page 32?
The move.
Motion for Bob?
Second.
Second for Erica. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the MEC recommendations for appointment or reappointment, please say aye.
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 Dr. Hoppy, anything else?
Nope, that'd be it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, wonderful Dr. Hoppy.
All right. And then we move on to our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Kevin Martin.
Well, with everyone else's report, what I'm left with is correcting the errors in mine. Charis Smith, Naomi Swain and Michelle Lovewell's transitions were reported previously to the board. The two things that I'm left with are, I get to actually give you the name of the third OB-HG provider, Dr. Tagavilla. And finally, I just, on a very personal level, Tim, want to thank you for helping me transition into this role eight years ago. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Martin? All right, thank you, Dr. Martin.
Just formally, oh, okay.
Wait a minute then.
This, you know, as, as you look at, as the months go by recruiting for physicians, is it getting any easier? Or is it still just, there's just not enough of them? It's utterly unpredictable. Physician that I thought would be one of our hardest recruits, vascular surgeon. We have seven applicants. We have one that we're interviewing tomorrow. Several of them won't complete their training until next, next summer. Quite frankly, I would be wary of bringing a very, very green surgeon here. But the interest was just astounding. And then we can go six months or a year without having an applicant for internal medicine. Like, part of that is because internal medicine, the primary care specialties are the lowest compensated specialties in medicine. And so most folks figure that they can invest another year or two in their training and reap the rewards over the course of their lives. It's, but it is going to be tough and it's only going to get tougher over the next 10 years.
So since Dr. Stone isn't going to be an FME anymore, are, are we having any comments and issues that her patients have to find another doctor?
We have that whenever a provider transitions. It's finally stabilized where we had it in spades in internal medicine. When every time a locum left, patients didn't understand that they were temporary hires. So, oh my gosh, I've only had this doctor three months and he's moved on. Well, that was always what was going to happen. We've got some stable staffing there now and that'll calm down. We've got some good applicants that we're looking at for FME. So as we're staffing the partnering physician model, we're actually redesigning that a little bit on the fly and starting to think in terms of having a more senior physician and a more junior physician, so that when there are the inevitable transitions, there is still a doctor on that team that's been there and offers continuity.
If I'm wrong, but weren't Dr. Stone and, and Dr. Wright co-leading partnering the Orange team there? So that, I think that'll help.
Yeah.
And Dr. Wright has really stepped up. I think she's been joining that leadership role.
Absolutely. Thank you. Certainly. Anything else?
Any other questions for Dr. Martin?
Dr. Stone's going to be between point five at FME, alternating between Peds or?
She's just going to be at Peds and then her other point five is as Medical Director for Community-Based Care Services.
Any other questions for Dr. Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our CFO with the finance report, Jason Adler.
Yeah, thank you. My report's on page 35. I'll go through a few things and then I do have two action items. Items are at the bottom. So August financials and volumes were pretty mixed, but, and that resulted in total charges for the month being below budget by 1.2 million for the month. The budget for the month of August is much higher and that's, it's mostly spread due, due to the amount of days in the month and weekday versus weekend mix. Compared to your day average, we're $134,000 shy on half per compared to the actuals average. So that sounds a lot better than 1.2 million shy compared to compare actuals to actuals. Expenses were over budget, but contractual adjustments were much lower. That was due to a couple of offsetting things that occurred in the month. One of them is the SNAP funds, which is the Safety Net Assessment Program with the state. And how that works is we pay in an assessment amount, which is based on our Medicaid patients that we serve. It's $303,000 per quarter we pay in. And then we get $771,000 per quarter back. And then we do recognize that on a monthly basis, so we don't see a quarterly spike every three months. So we do see those funds flow through and it lowers our contractual adjustment amount.
How often are those numbers reset? Is that like an annual thing?
Once a year, yep. So we've always participated in SNAP funding. It was very significantly expanded in 2024 and 2025. Prior years, this was about a $60,000 program. You didn't even see the, it's still a wonderful benefit to have, but it's a very significant funding source for '24 and '25 and hopefully beyond.
And those are your wish adus of work. It was a huge look for WISHA to expand the program the way that they did with federal matching funds. So, so that is a great return on your wish adus.
Yeah, and they do all the labor to manage this program, which is very welcome from them. Similar programs like the DISH program, disproportionate share hospitals. Lot more legwork from us and that one yields about $50,000 a year. So there's quite a few programs out there like that, that we participate in. The other thing that offset the contractuals was the reprocessing of the COVID testing that we did on Medicare patients from 2020 through 2022. And that was a reimbursement of those bio fires and they get those $235,000, the fact that we received from those. And they did go through and actually reprocess every patient's claim on those. So I don't know how that looks to the patient. Did that change their coinsurance payments? I, I don't know that yet. So if you hear people calling about still being reprocessed from 2020 to 22, hopefully nothing in the patient.
Is it the one Dr. Schmeyer's office is going to vote?
Thanks to Congresswoman Schreier, yeah.
Yeah, I was anticipating a, one of the lump. Usually these things are corrected by a lump statement. But this was actually processed to the claim. She's interesting.
Is it?
Surprised approach.
It is if the patient for some odd reason, first of all, they're going to call and yell and assume that we're two years late in billing. But if they ended up with the patient liability, I'm assuming we were right now.
Yeah, yeah. Lisa's been really monitoring those.
Probably posts on social media and try to stay ahead of the fires.
Do, you know, in a very technology-based system, even though our, our rev cycle one is not the most advanced in the world, we do try to catch those really old things up, but some do flow through automatically, so.
And we anticipate that they'll be reprocessed identically. Hopefully.
Yeah.
One injury.
So it's always kind of a, what's it, what's it going to do? So all this resulted in operating loss of $52,000, so it was actually a much lower loss than I'd anticipated due to those offsets, a net income of $426,000 due to continued positive investment returns there. The Fed did decrease their, the interest rate, which brings down our investment return potential on our cash. I did, over the last six months, I was going a lot longer on our investments, so even out to 2029. So it's kind of, we've locked in some pretty high rates, at least for the next five years on a portion of our investments. Year-to-date, we're running at a 1.65% margin. And I just highlight that this month because a 1.65% margin is, is in the, what the HA, what should I say? Is like your okay bracket. So margins have held very, very tight anymore, not quite negative. And then three to five is what they're saying is good and five and up is an exceptional big margin anymore. So we're running in a good, okay position there on the network.
How many places in Washington are over fledged?
Yeah, there's not a, not a lot right now. And we've really dipped with the, the rest of the hospital, so it was very. the rest of the hospitals. So it was very common twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three to be high and then have this dip right now. There is a lot of pressure from the insurances to find ways to deny and they are capitalizing on it amazingly. Something that I learned this week, what they're taking advantage of is the delegated credentialing. So Primera, for example, they won't delegate credentialing to any hospital unless you have more than a hundred providers privileged. So we have a hundred and eleven that went to apply and they're not accepting applications anymore at this time because they're too busy. So that was really convenient for them. Regents, Lycra, Blue Shield was the same response. So that is just another shocking response to them. And Shannon's going to report. That's the way I see it. I don't know if that will do anything, but at least let us feel better about the work out there. It's a much more efficient system when they delegate to us, so it's just surprising that they won't pull into that.
No, in fact, just close the loop. I, I know last month it was that Jason talked about the fact that insurance companies, their premiums may go up twelve percent. I think we're experiencing six to eight percent this year. They limit our increases to five percent. And we know the wage pressure, the workforce pressure has certainly been at a higher level than five percent. So there's the built-in friction there, but also when we talk about a one point six percent margin being an okay return, cost of capital is running eight percent. So we, you know, healthcare always battled. We are not replacing like equipment. We are replacing with the, the cost of capital and the cost of new technology. So the investment returns or the returns that we have on our operations are in no, by no means keeping up with what we're going to have to invest in to keep up with healthcare.
When you say that they limited it five percent, is, is that just a choice they you allow to really make? Is that codified somewhere?
Contract to be a network and all our contracts, all of ours cap five percent, five to six percent. And so that's our charge master increase that we can do every year up to five, six percent. Some years we weren't doing that five, six percent. We are right now because of this hyperinflation market.
They almost demand that we take the max every year by helping it.
And they don't give me credit if you don't do.
Yeah, it's not like you get a rule.
Yeah, and you get no appreciation or any credit for that in future negotiations for not taking it.
So the Office of the Insurance Commissioner in Washington State monitors, regulates the premiums for individuals in smaller plans, but not for the large plans. So literally, those premiums are, some of the premiums for smaller plans are managed through the, the insurance commissioner, but the large plans don't have anyone looking at what their premium increases are year over year. But again, they're not going to budge on that five percent.
And the five percent only applies to a small subset of our charges. So we can, it applies to about three point two percent overall. So physician professional fees, we, we can't increase here. We have to negotiate every year for physician reimbursement. And that's based on R V U. Insurance pays us on a R V U basis and we have to negotiate every year for and, and they obviously are not in a rush to try to say, oh, your contract's up twelve thirty-one, let's get a new rate. It's contracts up twelve thirty-one, let's start negotiating in February. So that, that lag.
Kick that down the road if I see you can.
Yeah. Seeing more and more hospitals terming insurances and that's their avenue to negotiate.
Is there an avenue for hospitals to work together to lift that five percent in order to keep up with inflation?
It's one-by-one negotiating. So we have the ability with the real collaborative to work through core contract language, but we can't agree.
Must be nice to be an insurance company.
And then, yeah, another example.
This is there.
Yeah, sorry, I'm venting. Kaiser, who we termed some time ago, they found a hole to not pay what they should be paying for out of network based on the No Surprises Act. They are interpreting as No Surprises Act in their own way. And I reached out to an attorney to see if they could support us with this and they can't help us because of a conflict of interest because they are also Kaiser's contracted with them. So he gets squeezed out of the market pretty quickly there. Yeah.
I do believe our congressional delegation sees, does not believe that CMS is appropriate or AHS is appropriately interpreting the No Surprises Act. So those claims are being repriced at twenty-two percent of charges or something?
Yes, that's the main. That's the main care. So, yeah, Kaiser patient presents to your ER, we serve ER if they go to surgery or whatever. Kaiser's saying, well, the market rate for the No Surprises Act is, we'll pay you about thirty percent of what you charge. Market rate for a commercial at all peripheral access hospitals in the state is about eighty-five to ninety percent of charge.
So they're ahead by not counting.
Yeah. And then there's also no legislative body or recourse to try to work with those. So I've reached out to WISH and looking for recommendations of what attorney specialists could help with this and the two that I have. We can't help us because they're also contracted with Kaiser.
That's actually a fairly common practice to retain as many as you can so that they're off limits to anybody coming after you.
I've learned this, yeah. Any other questions on the financials? Or the, the written report? I have the last two bullets there, but they are both around the bond and the land purchase. So those we can talk about in a couple of minutes, but I did want to jump over to talk about this on page forty-one, the payer mix, as we talked about with Medicare Advantage. We did send out that letter to, it was twenty-seven hundred community members that we've identified as Medicare Advantage patients. And we've had a few calls to the phone number at the bottom to revenue cycle. And then I did have a call today and learned quite a bit about this program. SIBA program, statewide health insurance benefit advisor group. It is a volunteer group offered through the Office of the Insurance Commissioner and they are very neutral part to help educate people on insurance selection. So they called, very surprised with our letter and very surprised that they were not a reference on the letter. So I now have their information and learned about this program. They also acknowledge that they are the, about the biggest hidden secret that there is in the insurance world for helping select an insurance plan. And they are local volunteers. So if you call this number or reach out through their website, it does route to them. And there are two in our county that.
Think they can get a task and help.
Is it smarter to go through them to start rather than the two insurance companies you recommended or what do you?
You know, I, from talking with this lady, I, I would definitely recommend people to go to them to be coached. One thing with the, the insurance brokers that we list, they are great. They share values. They are neutral. Medicare Advantage plans pay insurance brokers a significant fee to get enrollment. So there is some implicit bias that can be portrayed through that. The volunteers obviously do not fit strictly into patient. And Medicare, original Medicare doesn't give any incentive to sign up for them, so.
The foundation board, a couple of their members received these and they were very engaged.
Yeah, so excited to hopefully see us managing the trend of Medicare Advantage increasing. Questions on those?
Questions? Okay.
Let's turn to the resolution on page forty-seven. So this is a revolution of the ten million dollar bonds. We are set for a close date of September thirty. And it was, this was the first time that I've ever went through this. This hands-on, I went through them before from support position and it was a very pleasant process. And it was nice that Siemens ended up being the vendor of choice for this. And they came out on site last Thursday on the nineteenth and it was really pretty fun to walk through and tour them through all of the campus here, the things that we have going on. They were very impressed with everything that's going on. They, they combed through our financials with a very fine comb and they do that site visit. They feel very strong about our operations here and everybody that they met. And thank you, Amy, for the impromptu tour and introduction and a lot of questions as we toured through the expansion area that joined us as well.
And I think Bob and I expressed some frustration with some of the fees involved in these issuances. And I think Jason's able to use that to go back and it sounds like reduce the foot fee very noticeably.
Yeah, I think we're about three hundred thousand dollars or a little more on the last one. So we, I did negotiate the fees early on to the significant less and then it was then further again for bond council stuff because we did retain the same Siemens and it's very similar to the last offering. We were able to get them lower than the last time.
Makes a little bit less painful too.
Do the children's. I don't know, a hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred million fees on, on ten million, so.
It's nice to be able to say the board insists that we.
We're walking.
Is there anything else that you guys, being on the finance committee, think that we should, we should know?
Well, we tried to, to bump it to fifteen million, knowing there was things in the pipeline that it would be useful for. Got a tremendous amount of pushback from the people, entities that had offered bids. And we didn't want to, it wasn't logical to start the process over. And so this serves our immediate needs and, and covers a few things. So after some lengthy discussion, we felt it was acceptable to move forward under the terms we were getting and.
Yeah, we had three that we went back to and requested lifting that to fifteen million. All three said that they would like to stay at ten million and they are open to that. Over, it'll take more time and they will want a lot more information and underwriting and a program to tie it to. So like with the expansion, it tied to the expansion. And it was only fifty percent of the expansion. It was a large revenue source to come out of that. They wanted to do a lot of underwriting on those programs further than this was a minimal underwriting of the program. So it would have been much more extensive.
And it was also educational to learn that the interest rate on this sort of thing is not really connected to the very public interest rate. You hear the, you know, the, the Fed changing and whatnot. We're only two, two tenths of a percent above when, when interest rates were much, much lower.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-two offering, which was when interest rates were way low. So you'd get a mortgage for three percent. Our, well, I guess that was before twenty-two, it was that low. So our rate was four point oh five percent twenty-two.
For the last issuance.
Yeah. And this insurance is four point two five percent. So a very tight barrier.
And these are tax-exempt bonds. So the purchasers are what are considered sophisticated purchasers and maybe not paid tax on the interest that they earn.
I would point out a typo in the resolution. Into the second line, sale and delivery of, but not to exceed ten million dollars.
This is for a bond, it is ten million.
Right, but.
There's type.
Sale on delivery of a.
I think that's right. It's just, it's not to exceed ten million.
And not to exceed ten million.
It's.
I was wondering if it was a note or.
What if you had hyphens? A not hyphen to.
If it's not significant, I'd. It's a million off of it.
We pay nine hundred and forty dollars an hour for somebody to draft these resolutions. Bond counsel is expensive, so.
And no more than ten million dollars. But thanks for keeping an eye out for this stuff.
Mandy did catch some things though, even at that nine hundred and forty dollar.
Are you getting that much?
I'd ask for a raise.
Alright, and I assume that Bob and John, you guys are supportive of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh five?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion from Bob, I'll second. Second from John. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor then of approving resolution number twenty-four dash oh five issuance of hospital revenue bond, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright.
One quick note, the, the date before the signature line, is that the twenty-sixth versus the thirtieth?
It should be the thirty.
Based on our discussion, it's going to be the thirtieth so that it is signed the same day.
I don't think the resolution.
I got.
The resolution doesn't need it?
No, because we send that in tonight.
There's, there's a very large stack of documents for this. This is only one of them. And there's little tweaks on.
Mandy's got her eye on it, so I'll start.
And I would absolutely call out Mandy as appreciation for helping through this. There's a lot of paperwork.
So what's, what Mandy gave me this email says, we'll be closing the bond issuance September thirtieth, which is why all documents are dated as that day. However, in order to get the money to the district on that day, we need to get documents to the bank and the council as soon as possible. So everything's signed in advance at tonight's meeting. So they'll hold all documents in Astro until they're released at closing on the fifth. Does that answer?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so twenty-four dash oh five passes. Then we have twenty-four dash oh six.
Yeah, so this is a pretty exciting one. Looking for authorization to purchase forty-two acres of land. It's located on the south side of Dollar Way, near the West interchange. Purchasing from the Caloways. We've been working on this for, for quite some time now, the process over a couple of years to identify some potential lands and have reached out to various landowners expressing interest and this was our number two choice that became our number one choice after number one became not feasible. So really excited to be able to capture this opportunity and work with Caloways. It's very good to work with.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank the Financial Sustainability Committee. This has really been the sounding board for this and, and the unanim性 of that committee has allowed us to look at various options and ask really, really good questions. I think that has allowed Jason and administration to advance this project. So that strategic, I don't want to imply that Matt's committee isn't winning, but I would just say that the Financial Sustainability Committee's been invaluable and.
Let him have this one. Okay, so, and I assume you guys, while we've talked about this at various meetings, including at last, last meeting. Are there any any questions from the board or any, any further comments from the board?
Well, again, I would just say, you know, we had very lengthy discussions and we're able to find that price point that we could really support in all confidence. And Jason was able to use that, I think, to, to get it to a, to a price point that works for the public hospital district, so.
Yeah, thanks for all your work on this, Jason.
Tried to negotiate a cow into the deal and I thought that we had that lock.
What color is it? Did we get it?
Well, wait, we didn't get it, so we don't need to know. Color of a non-existent.
We get a constellation chain.
Still trying. I would give it up. The only thing to also know, the closing date, honor before September thirtieth, we have made that to September twenty-seventh, so not, not to do it the same day as the closing bond.
One big deal per day was, it's a lot.
It's been a busy month. I'm excited for next month.
Any, any other questions or discussion on twenty-four dash oh six, the acquisition of real estate?
I just want to, Jason did a really good job. You know, having some pretty tough negotiations to hold the hospital's ground and to really doing a good job watching out for hospital and the community and kind of get the best price and.
He's got the skills now to go take on a car dealership.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's silly, but fine.
As long as it's a six point five billion dollar.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any other discussion about twenty four dash oh six? All right then, uh, do I have a motion to approve resolution uh twenty four dash oh six, uh, the acquisition of uh real estate for district purposes?
I will move.
Motion from John.
I'll second.
Second from Erica. Any further discussion? All those in favor of uh resolution number twenty four dash oh six acquisition, acquisition of real estate for district purposes, please say aye.
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 That's a lot of money. We just didn't have ten minutes. All right, um. Anything else, Jason, uh, before we uh move on?
I think that's enough, yes.
All right, thank you very much, uh, Jason. So next up then we have the uh Community Relations Report uh from uh Michelle World. Michelle, you can hear me all right?
Sure can. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're up.
Perfect. Um, so we'll start with the Community Relations Report. I do not have anything additional to add on that, so I can take any questions if you have them.
Any questions about the um for reports?
Uh, how, how have the farmer markets events been? Do you?
Yeah, I'm hearing great outreach. Um, we're having a lot of people stop by, a lot of conversations. No common themes are asked, um primarily positive. We also just did bite of the bird on Tuesday, I believe. Um, had great reception and feedback. It was primarily college students, but a lot of conversations about, oh, I need to establish provider here. Um, so they've been very good.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions for Michelle about her report?
Okay, then we will move on to the Community Health Improvement Plan, the CHIP. Uh, you may recall, this is something that as a five oh one C three, we are required to do every five years. Um, we are required to adopt a community health improvement plan as well as a community health needs assessment. Um, what you have in your packet this month is the improvement plan. This is work that was done um through Public Health, K C H N, uh, and some partnerships. And next month we will include the uh Community Health Needs Assessment. It was the background work that went with all of this. Um, we just literally forgot to include it in this month's packet and I didn't wanna spring it on you at the last minute since it is something that we need to adopt. So that is what we have here in the plan. Um, I don't think it's any big surprises, but I would uh, welcome any questions you have and hopefully we can all answer them.
You guys have all had a chance to review this uh ahead of the meeting, I assume. Any questions about the uh Community Health Improvement Plan? Okay, here none then. Um, do I have a motion to approve the Community Health Improvement Plan? Right, this is something we have to approve.
Right, right.
I move to approve this.
Okay, motion from Terry.
Second.
Second from Erica. Any further uh discussion or questions? All those in favor of proving the Community Health Improvement Plan, please say aye.
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 Anything else, Michelle?
So I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no education board reports uh this month, no old business, no new business. We're gonna talk about personnel and executive section. Think we'll take uh uh, let's, let's plan for forty minutes. Let's take a five minute break until uh seven forty and then plan to go until eight twenty. Uh, Julie, if you wouldn't mind sticking around, uh, is there any, anything else that you have, Julie, besides uh?
None. Um, we'll see you all hopefully Monday for dinner and networking with the directors and senior leadership. I know Terry's not gonna be able to make it, but Dr. Hoppy, I believe you and Dr. Thomas will be going to have opportunity to relax and just celebrate some of the things we do before we plan for next year.
All right, sorry, can't make it. And, and all right, thank you all for uh, for all the work you do in preparation for the meetings and for uh being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Dr. O'Brien. Uh, Jason and Terry, uh, I need to watch you guys sign this. Uh, so if you wouldn't mind coming over here and signing this in front of me. It says, I further certify that on the attached pages are the true and genuine signatures of.
We don't want like the.
So uh, so I'm just gonna sign it and watch you sign.
Yeah, thank you all for the work you do.
All right, either way, all right, so Terry, you're there.